All right. Well, guess what? You get me tonight. I think though Ken is online, so. Welcome to the 4pm work session of the City Council, July 2nd, 2024. Everyone is present and we have Chair Ritchie online. I don't know if he just wants to be online or if he wants to say hi.
I can hear you and thank you.
Yeah. Let's quickly run over our agenda. Any, any? Anybody want to talk about our agenda? I think Rich, you're going to do the, the recognition. Okay, and then. Awesome. Good. Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, other than that, or that, the actual council meeting is pretty short and. We have the option to coming into a closed session if we choose to afterwards. We've kind of put those on in case there's things to talk about, but we can decide that as we're walking in the door, so. Um, with that, we, we have somewhat of a. Full agenda. Um, so I think we're gonna just. Is there anything I'm missing? Janine? All right, then let's bring up, I don't know, I s- oh, I see the chief and, and Kevin Brown. If you guys want to come up and talk about. One of my favorite things to talk about. Yeah. Burning, burning dry grass, right?
Not burning grass.
Okay. Yeah. We kind of are sharing microphones for a while. Because we had a very. Burnout situation.
Well, council chair and council members, thank you for having us here. We wanted to give you an update on the fire restrictions we did impose. We talked to a few weeks about what was impending and. You can also understand now the challenges given the environmental conditions and not very hard to predict. And they change rather rapidly. But just to give you an idea of what's occurred just in the last two weeks, I was talking with the mayor and he, and he said, you know, when I was a council member, I had no idea. Some of the activity you deal with and now because he's the mayor, we, he's also. Connected to the notification of when we have a significant event like such as a working fire and, and so, so is mayor as well. And he said, just the last couple of weeks, I can't believe all the activity that's going on. So just to give you some background, we just did a quick rundown of since June 19th, June. I need my glasses on, but June, June 18th. We've had 14 structured fires, 11 outside of our jurisdiction, 10 of which we helped. On, on the outside jurisdiction, but 14 of our known that, that were sent out on structured fires that some turned into significant fires, some did not. But that's what they're labeled as. But more importantly, with the fire restrictions that are going on right now. In the last two weeks, we've had 13 grass fires in Ogden City alone. And there's been 23 outside of Ogden City of which we assisted on two of those in with automatic aid because they're neighboring jurisdictions. So. Just to give you an idea of what's happening over the last few weeks, conditions are changing rapidly and, and things, if you, if you saw the story about the. Homeless encampment that had the fire and had, and it's burned two or three different days. That's been one of the bigger problems, but there's been assorted others throughout the community. So I'll let Kevin talk to you about the restrictions, what we're doing. And what we propose to do maybe next year in regards to how we'll stratify the restrictions to help people understand things a little bit better.
I, I think the last time we were here, we were kind of on the fence on if we were going to do restrictions for the fourth or not. But Chief and I got together end of, I guess, two weeks ago and decided that it was, it was time. Um, just to give you some background, you know, we, we watched the stats and we get the fuels reports from the Forest Service. On June 11th, the East Bench was measuring 219% of normal moisture, which means very low fire behavior, a lot of moisture. Two weeks later, so last week they were at 150%, so it dropped 60, 70% moisture content in two weeks. And so we assume it's going to be down to normal or below normal this week, which means, uh, you know, uh. More intense fire behavior if it were to happen. And then just due to the, the spring we had and all the moisture, you've probably noticed the grass in the foothills is exceptionally tall. And it, it's dry. Um, I think a lot of people think, well, it was a great winter. We had plenty of moisture. And you should have a good year, but it's, it's kind of the opposite. You know? If you water your yard all through April and it grows two feet high and then you quit, it's just going to turn brown and die. And so that's where we're at. That's why we decided to restrict and. I guess within two days, the state implemented stage one fire restrictions after we implemented our fire restrictions. So we're not alone in this. We didn't like go off the reservation and decide it was a good idea. But typical fire restrictions at this point for the East Bench and the areas we've identified in the map. And, uh, he was talking about this stratification. If you read the ordinance now, fire restrictions say. No open flames whatsoever. And so a lot of people want to live to the letter of the law. And so we'll get a lot of calls about, well, can I have a barbecue? Can I have a fire pit? And we have to answer those questions individually. So one thing we want to work on for next year with legal is, uh, we've talked about a, a stoplight system, uh, green, yellow, red, and what those restrictions mean. You know, green is where we would operate for. 300 days out of the year. And then when we have fire restrictions, we could be at a yellow or a red and we would, we would define that. So people understand it better. So that's one thing we're working on for next year. Other than that, did you have any specific questions about the fire restrictions or how they're implemented or?
Kevin, does it mean that? Backyard fire pit is off limits east of Harrison now?
So the way we've defined it, we, we actually put out something in social media yesterday to try to address that. A backyard fire with wood would be off limits, but you could have a gas fire pit.
Okay.
Um, if you could turn it off, that would be allowed. Um, and we feel like that's a reasonable accommodation.
Charcoal grill?
Would be allowed as a lid, commercially prepared charcoal. We didn't get quite into that level of detail. So if people still want to call, but that's the detail we want to get into for next year's ordinance change. Because those are the questions that people ask.
Yeah, it is. I think everybody thinks it's just fireworks this time of the year.
What we're, what we're calling this, this legal is, is a concept of if we're in yellow, it would be no firework. If, if we were in, uh, the next stage, maybe red, it would be okay. No fireworks, no open burning of any kind of organic material. Um, but we'd still allow the artificial such as, uh, the, the propane, propane fire pits. And, uh, then if we went black, just say, for example, of using a color, you, we wouldn't allow any, but, but it would, from a practical standpoint, somebody that says. Uh, my spouse or significant other wants me to go outside to smoke and I live above Harrison. Does that mean I can't go outside and smoke a cigarette or whatever? Well, no, we're not trying to. Uh, so we, we need to get some practicality to it, um, in terms of it's enforceable and understandable. And we think also. Using a color coded system is much easier because people can relate to that, uh, as far as increasing the level of danger. So. Uh, we took the approach when we originally drafted it, working with, with legal that it'd just be go, no go. And now we're realizing that we've got to establish some practicality to it. So we're going to try to tweak that a little bit. And also as a reminder, uh, council member, we, we have moved the, the barrier down to Monroe. Once it hits second and Harrison moves down to Monroe and then goes out to the city boundary because. That's so close to the interface that, uh, we wanted to move that down.
In my little bubble that I rotate in, I see the little reader boards up on Harrison. I think like 12th and, or 20th and. Maybe 23rd, 23rd around there. Are there any north of 12th Street and any? I don't go past 40th Street either, but are there any on the south end?
One at, uh, Ninth Street and then 36th Street.
Okay, perfect.
If my memory is right.
Great.
And, and just as a reminder, fireworks can be lit as of today, starting at 11 o'clock this morning, going to 11th and Ninth through the sixth, correct?
The fifth.
The fifth, excuse me. And then it opens up again around the 24th, two days before, two days after. And we'll be dealing with that and the complaints and, and the challenges with that as well.
And it'll probably shock you to hear this, but I heard fireworks last night. And they weren't, they weren't legal at the time. I'm shocked, but it happened.
I do have a question. You know, the, you know, the hotspots, right? You, you're aware of the places where people tend to want to accumulate and. Shoot these off here. You don't need to have any more notification of those, do you?
Not necessarily. We, we, we do want to hear about the complaints and then we can patrol those areas. And, and then hopefully through just our passive patrol of having either us or police department, uh, wandering through that, that'll kind of curtail a little bit, but. It is truly like this, the, the whack a mole situation. You could, you would go to one place and then. And, and unfortunately on the fourth, uh, that seems where most of the money is spent and the, the excitement about seeing the joy of seeing fireworks and then the 24th dies down. We don't see the misuse or abuse as much. But, uh.
It, and I don't mind if you call non-emergency dispatch, that's data we can track. You know, we had this many complaints on the fourth and I think that's always good.
There's, there's just a few, uh. Parking lots that seem to want to invite people to. To come and, and they do this because they can multiply their. You know, because a bunch of people come to the same place and get to share everybody else's fireworks, but. Uh, and, and that's why, that's why I asked the question. I mean, I, I could give you, you know, two or three places that I just know what happens and.
Yeah, some other, just for your information, other communities along the way that's front of designated certain parks and encouraged people to come. And light their fireworks there. The concern there is the cleanup, the damage. Uh, our parks folks that we partner with all the time, they, they're not real high on. Taking on that responsibility. And then when you congregate that many people, uh, you have potential for accidents. Who's really in charge of lighting and where and, and. Those kinds of things. So that, that could be problematic. So we've not approached that subject. Um, we've just encouraged people east of Harrison in the restricted area to find family or friends that. They can go to to light them in the unrestricted areas.
So in previous years. Um, we, we also looked at corridors like down the, the.
Rivers?
The rivers. Is that still the chase?
Place.
Okay.
Or winning material, the river bottom.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Fort's got a lot of cotton.
Yeah.
Cotton's probably will burn easier than anything out there.
And, uh, just second question, what's the non-emergent number? Do you know?
Seven, three, one.
Oh.
Six, two, nine, eight, two, two, one. That's the old one.
Yeah, I think it's eight, seven, because it's eight, seven, two.
Hold on, sorry.
The answer is no, one.
Yeah. I don't have one. I have a radio, so.
I have it.
Three, three, nine, five, eight, two, two, one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eight oh one, three, nine, five, eight, two, two, one.
Yeah, it, it was a city number and I, we're going away from it.
So maybe we could do something on our social, not. Just throw it out there.
We'd love to have any, any, we're, we try to get the message out best we can and. We have a lot of dog owners that get upset because their dogs get upset and.
Gratefulness. I like the green, yellow, red thing. That is a lot easier to understand.
Yeah, it'll be a work in progress. We'll try to have it ready for next year. Great, back to you.
Yeah. Well, thanks for the update. Anything else? No, no. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, exactly. A quiet one.
All right. Uh, next we have the management study of the Ogden City Prosecutor's Office, Maggie Smith. Yeah, come on up.
Um. Awesome. Thanks. Uh. And then I can just go through slides here. Perfect. So just that's the why the new formatting. So. I wanted to go over really the outline of the presentation today and leave time for questions. Uh, our approach and methodology, how did we arrive to some of these answers? What were our key findings related to staffing and caseload? Also, what is some of our caseload analysis and the risks associated with it? Just to give a preface, you will hear me talk a little, a little bit about your average misdemeanor cases per prosecutor that you have and how it compares to other cities. And also what the American Bar Association says is standard. So that's a little bit of what we'll be going over. And then comparable staffing, again, with, uh, really the best city comparison that we can use is West Valley City, just given. Um, one, the kind of caseload that they do, but also. Being not too far from a university, Logan just wasn't really a good apples to apples comparison. So the closest one. This is more apples to pears instead of apples to oranges, which would be other ones. And a pear is really just a condescending apple a little bit. So, uh, or a protection. Anyway, so. Um. And then go over some of our recommendations. So really overview of what we did, uh, internal fact finding, made sure we interviewed everybody. Talked about what's going well, what could improve? Where do you feel we could improve efficiency specifically? Because it's not enough just to say, how are we, where are we falling short? It's what is the low hanging fruit that we can identify here? And so additional interviews that we were able to do, um, with Ogden Police Department, also with Judge Junk, had a really productive conversation with him. Realizing that he was at one point the head prosecutor, so he has a lot of historical perspective as well. And then follow up discussions after we did some of our research, which included reviewing of all current policies and procedures. Review of current technology to support those services and then an analysis breaking down trends of Ogden caseloads since the pre-pandemic levels.
Can I just stop for a second?
Yeah.
I'm, I just think, I'm wondering if maybe constituents or people that are listening might wonder why we're doing this.
Oh, yeah.
Reason why, uh, just as a context.
For sure. No, good question.
Well, I would just add, you know, one of the responsibilities of the council is to, um, study the, do, do studies of, uh, the administration to make sure that things are. Efficient and effective and doing the things that they're supposed to do. So the council has periodically, um, done these studies. Um, at one point we did them every year. Uh, then we went, it does take a lot of staff time on the administrative side. So we went to every two years. Uh, and then COVID happened and it kind of threw our game off. Uh, but, um, in. Usually it's very helpful to have buy-in from the administrative staff and an interest in having these things done. And. Gary actually, Gary Williams, the city attorney, actually approached me and said, hey, would you do this? And. Um, as you know, Chief Matthew's been very effective in using his management study that was done. What, 14 years ago? And he's just still, he's just barely finishing up the recommendations from that study. He's very effective in using that to get some, sort of some of the things they, that he needed, um, to make his operations better. And so I think some of the directors now, instead of, um, groaning when they get the opportunity to have this come in. They see it as an opportunity to, uh, really take a look at their operations and, and they're open to suggestions for improvement. So that's why. We had Mackey. We did an RFP. I had several, um. Companies, uh, make proposals and, uh. Tanner and Mackey won, so.
Good question. Any other, and Phil, I, I like the back and forth dialogue. So if at any time you have a question on a specific point I'm presenting, don't feel like you need to hesitate. Um, I'm kind of looking at the newer council members just because I, I feel like. Four of you know very much that you can just kind of be like, hey, Mackey, stop talking for a quick sec. Let me ask you this. So, and then lastly, market research comparing again, that caseload to other cities throughout the state. We did do in the report, a breakdown comparing it to Salt Lake City, West Valley, West Jordan, South Jordan, Provo, Logan. The major places where they also have justice, municipal justice courts. But just to kind of preface ahead of time, West Valley City is going to be the best comparison of kind of how they're running things versus how Ogden's running things. I also had a conversation with their head prosecutor as well, had a really, got a lot of good ideas from him. Um. This is a little redundant, but I just, just putting it in what your current staffing is. Now, keep in mind, when we submitted this report, this was several months ago and kind of this. Presentation has been delayed a few times. So since we presented to the internal team, there is a new staff member on your team who reviews, uh, body cam footage and helps out with some of that. But this was when we did the report, this was the current staffing levels at that time. It's actually reassuring to see that there already is one of the recommendations that they've already started to implement and you've gotten approval on. Which is getting that extra staff member to alleviate prosecutor time, having to review body cam. And Greg, by the way, if I'm, if I'm saying anything incorrectly, feel free to jump in and correct me. Um. And so again, the four prosecutors, including your lead prosecutor, your five support staff, one of whom is focused on as a victim coordinator, really working on those DV cases. And, uh, key findings. So we'll see that. Total cases have. Are still not quite to what they were at the pre-pandemic levels. But how would I word this? The most time intensive case that they have to manage are the misdemeanor cases. In some instances, a misdemeanor case takes as much prosecutorial time as a felony case would. And so it's, it really is time intensive. So if we were using like a KPI, like a key indicator, it really would be the number of misdemeanor cases per attorney. That's a big number that I've been using in this analysis. And also. Part of it is during the pandemic, you're not having as many traffic citations being issued. So those are sometimes get. Processed a lot quicker. So that's hence the reason why we're not quite to that pre-pandemic total caseload level. Um. For caseload analysis, and I'll actually jump to the third slide, so, or the third line there. I'm not recommending that you have to hire all the staff to get to a 500 caseload per attorney. I, I, or prosecutor, I don't think that would be realistically from a fiscal lens. But just so you're aware, ABA, their guidelines is on average roughly 500 misdemeanor cases per prosecutor. Um, I was looking at a lot of urban district courts and seeing what their average was, and that's typically what ABA recommends. Yeah. Oh, yeah, Amer- uh, yeah, American Bar Association. Sorry. Yeah. So. Oh, domestic violence. Per, no, thank you. Yep. I should have said that for the first time around. So there is one pro, if, if, if for anyone in the room who are not aware, there's one prosecutor who is. Designated specifically to domestic violence related cases. His salary is predominantly maybe 100% covered by VOA, so vi- uh, or VOKA. Oh, it, it is VOA, so Violence Against Women Act. Um. And so, um. For him, we kind of took him out of that prosecutor per misdemeanor because he, he has his own set number and can't really take the workload. So the other three non-DV prosecutors, including Greg, it's on average 915 misdemeanors per year. So nearly double what ABA recommends. Now, I'm not saying you then need to go out and double your prosecutor amount. Again, that wouldn't necessarily be realistic. But if you could work in the long run and we'll get to recommendations on somehow getting that. Down a little bit, or how do we alleviate other tasks that they're doing? So they're able to handle that excessive workload. Um, another piece on the caseload analysis, potential risks. So it, it, it goes without saying, potential quality of, of, um, on those cases can go down. Burnout is a big thing. And. The way our current labor market is, um, it's really hard to find you. Every department head in here, I think, has experienced it where it's hard to find and retain that good staff because there's, there's a lot of competition for quality folks. Um. State, federal government likes to talk about low unemployment rates. What it really means is people can't find workers that they, when they're trying to get them. And so, um, it's particularly true for the legal profession and a lot of other professional services like that, like accounting, engineering, et cetera. The pipeline of staff is a little low. So if you burn your people out and you lose them, it's going to be hard to get that replacement or it's going to be a long and, and costs costly, uh. Head hunting experience. So, uh, burnout, something to keep in mind, decrease in victim care. So being able to really provide that like trauma informed care to folks who have been through something as you're trying to coordinate with them. You have your victim coordinator, which is great, but just being able to have the time to really give them the time that they need can go down. Um, and then also potential desperate outcomes for defendants. Uh, and what I mean by desperate outcomes, different outcomes. If, if I, and I'm not saying your prosecutors are doing this right now, but other cities that I've looked at, um, you can have kind of the, um. I can get off your plate right now. Um. And so it does put. Um. It. I hate even using the word bargaining power in our justice system because it should just be a transparent process. But it creates this dynamic where people who are defendants are now going to try to pick defendant or prosecutors against each other and use that to their advantage when they know how burnt out they are. Um, a couple other pieces, and I have these a little bit in bigger, like, um, there is also the potential impact on equity of justice outcomes. Um. And so again, it's more just macro data on. The disproportionate like sentencing that can happen. So sometime, and that's not to say anyone has a, a bias in the department. It's just. Our unbeknownst biases, macro data shows that there does become a difference in the results for, uh, communities of color versus non, et cetera. Um, one other piece, potential liability for the city regarding domestic violence. So one key takeaway from talking with police, talking with a couple other prosecutors. The, the timeline of follow-up for, it's called a return for investigation. Hey, we need a little bit more info from the officer who filed the report so that we can know if we, if we have enough so we can really have formal charges in a domestic violence situation. Because there's such a heavy workload, sometimes weeks or months go by before that return for investigation can occur. Now, in that time, we know that when someone was brave enough, I've, I've been fortunate to work with the Utah Domestic Violence Coalition and several shelters down south. Um, when someone is brave enough to come forward about something going on, it's a moment of courage. And if nothing happens. That opportunity is lost. And so weeks, months go by, the officer might call the victim, um, and then they're like. I'm okay now. Or, uh, so they've gone back to the abuser or heaven forbid, something worse has happened in that time. Um, I, I don't want to name drop anything specific, but we know of recent cases down south, other universities where domestic violence wasn't taken seriously, resulting in the death of certain folks. And so. It would not look good for the city if due to workload. They weren't able to do that return for investigation and then something horrible happened to somebody who did file a DV report. I just, um, that's low probability, but high impact should that happen. So it's a severe risk that just needs to be mitigated to where it can. Um, and so it could open up the city to potential lawsuits or, or, um. Be held liable. So. That one required, I think, just a little bit extra time to explain really what we're dealing with. So comparables, any questions thus far, comments, thoughts? Okay, comparable staffing analysis, using West Valley City as that ideal benchmark comparison. Um, Ogden Justice Court faces the. Ogden Justice Court faces the most misdemeanors in the state of any justice court. Two to. Eight hundred and sixty six or roughly one prosecutor full time schedule more than what West Valley City does.
Mackie?
Yes.
Is is a misdemeanor a misdemeanor? Do they all are they all kind of the same or or is there some that are lots worse than?
Yeah, so there's like there's A, Bs and Cs for this court. Bs and Cs. Okay, perfect. I want to make sure I didn't I didn't misquote. So like DUIs can fall under that domestic violence can fall under that. Breaking and entering or theft. Certain traffic violations as well. So not all misdemeanors are the same. There also are some like lower grade like misdemeanor assault and stuff like that as well. Does I does that answer your question, though? I don't think it does.
Well, it does kind of answer my question, but I I'm just. Trying to think of, you know, I I mean misdemeanors to me are a speeding ticket and a. You know, a jaywalking or.
Yeah, some of.
I mean, some of those things don't seem like they're.
Right. Yeah, some of them are bigger like like a DUI or domestic violence situation. Or or you have stores reporting someone who shoplifted and then it becomes a kind of.
Right.
They have a history of shoplifting, they're on parole, now there becomes a lot of heightened senses, and now there's they're they're going to get a defend a. A defender and try to really take on the sentence.
Well, that that's kind of why I was asking.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So Ogden also has the lowest case clearance rate in the state of eighty seven percent. So that essentially means if four thousand cases entered the pipeline, they've cleared eighty seven percent of those by the end of the year. You have some cities in the report that was sent in your in your packet, some have an over hundred percent clearance rate. What that means is they came, they were able to clear cases from the previous year and the current year, hence why they have an over hundred percent. So most of the other cities meet that ninety nine percent or greater clearance rate. Ogden's one of the few that falls below that. And that from a staffing comparison, West Valley City has seven full time prosecutors, of which three and a half are fully dedicated to the justice court. The other three and a half split time with the county district court. And but based on this breakdown, those three and a half FTEs are each responsible for managing six hundred and eighty misdemeanors per year. Again, going back to that American Bar Association level, it's still significantly higher. But they're doing a pretty good job. So again, we're not recommending. Bringing it all the way down, but if we can get closer to being parity with West Valley, I think that's one of the recommendations in law the long term for staffing. That's pretty much it on that piece. Yes, okay, just want to make sure there wasn't anything else. It's a very text heavy slide. So recommendations, what do what do we do about it? And again, ultimately, your decision on on what is appropriate here. I, how would I word this? In other management studies, I've usually found, oh, you could change this in your process and this and this. Most things that would that could be done to improve efficiency will require some prosecutor time specifically from Greg to lead out on it. Unfortunately, I mean, today's a prime example of one prosecutor called in sick and now he's running back and forth trying to manage some cases. And so if. There isn't the free time needed to invest in internal improvements and implementing those changes. When they're constantly trying to keep their head above water with the caseload. Hence why there is a little bit more heavy recommendation on increasing staffing. It's typically as a consultant, everyone always wants more staff. Every department, every every city I've worked with. So I don't want this just to be seen as, yep, and we agree. It's there. There are some things that can be done, but in the long run, it's going to be hard to implement a lot of these internal improvements. Without more people. And so these are our recommended staffing levels in the long term, getting up to five prosecutors instead of three. An additional victim coordinator, an additional head clerk and clerk. And if you're able to start with more of the clerk or have an experienced paralegal who can be kind of a hybrid of the two, that would be great. It it's just what can you do to move the needle slowly over a period of time? Other recommendations, though, other than just the staffing piece, I don't want to belabor that point. Yeah, for sure.
So there's asterisks, I just wondered.
Oh, that's just where there's where it's different from what it currently is.
Oh, I got it. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, I guess typically you would put at the bottom what the asterisk means. So good catch.
Mackie, if I may, are there things handled through our court that aren't A, B, or C misdemeanors? Small claims?
Um, there are some. I almost wanted to defer to Greg to comment on it just because. Or you got to come to, you want to come up? You can also come sit with me. I know we're friends, so.
Small claims, we don't handle small claims. And those are just private cases. What it's the other the trap, most of the traffics are infractions. So we handle B. And C misdemeanors and infractions. And most of the traffic are infractions. And so. We're just dealing with criminal stuff.
Yeah. So there's not some, there's not as much that could be delegated to another court. I mean, there are some things where you could say. Change what what Weber County does versus Ogden City does. But right now it's they're kind of playing in a very distinct lane, the Ogden Prosecutor's Office. That was one of the first things we looked at is are they taking on cases that they not should not be taking on? And it seems pretty on par with what most prosecutors offices do take on, which is those lower level misdemeanors and those infractions.
So just for clarification, is this what all this take place in the building that's? West of our parking lot?
Yes.
Because a couple of years ago, I did file a small claim and it was administered through that office. So I'm assuming it. Involved some of the clerks and that sort of thing. And we did not go before a judge. There were mediators in there and there were volunteers, but. Still, I think we're we must be employing some city people in all that, yeah?
That is, that's the court clerks and not our office. And so, yeah.
Okay.
So that so our office had nothing to do with that. The court clerks runs the small claims and they provide the mediators for that. And then the judges hear those on Thursday afternoons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hire as well, so.
I I do have a question, though. And I'm I'm sensitive to this is a this is a touchy topic. And, okay. These these guys are prosecuting crime. There's a fine. When you're when you're talking about a prosecutor, you know, three versus five. Are they going to turn enough to pay their own salary kind of a thing? And I hate to even.
No.
Even say that that's why we would ever do anything, but you know, we do have to pay for things. So.
I would say if the city wanted to explore policies. The term tough on crime gets used way too. I don't want to go in that direction necessarily, but to set a. A very clear line of where you're going to plea or where you're very much not going to plea. If you wanted to set a new standard. There would need to be additional prosecutors to set that higher standard, if that makes sense. I don't know if that would actually generate, though, the fine revenue to cover the additional prosecutor. So it seems like it would, there would need to be additional funding to make it work, at least from the for the for the get go. Yeah, no, that's a great question. I mean. That's one thing that's great about working with your cities. We can just have those blunt conversations, so.
Well, the the issue is others are listening also.
Yes, yeah.
I I just don't want to send any kind of a message.
Of course.
Well, Ogden's doing this stuff to make money because because that has never been our motivation.
Totally.
And but we do have to keep those things in mind. That's why I was really careful on how to ask that question.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on the staffing recommendations? Okay, there are some things, though, that we did find that can be worked on. And so maybe with this new hire taking on body cam footage, it will free up some time to start tackling these. But as far as the process, there needs to be developing a legal research database to save time for the future. Essentially, you invest a lot of time as a lawyer researching a case. And then if you don't document it, then the next time a similar case comes up. You're spending loads of time trying to find your old research or just having to redo that research again. So being building a centralized database where they can really be able to pull answers quick. Be able to turn through their their work faster. Another process piece. This is a recommendation of almost like pat on the back, continue to do this. The way that they group their legal assistants into two teams that correspond with a different judge, it's actually quite effective because then you builder of. A chemistry. Oh, I'm going to use the buzzword as a consultant, a synergy gets built. So with that with that judge, and you just know also personalities of who you're working with. So that is an effective approach. We've I've seen that working here, and I would recommend that you continue to do that. Policy, meet as a leadership team, meaning the legal team. To establish uniform consistent policy on which types of cases will be prosecuted, pled down altogether dismissed. The hard part is you don't want to document that and then a lawyer is like, oh, we're going to do research because everything is grandmaable. And so it's just you have to have some more conversations as a team of what is our overall thought on policy regarding these types of cases? Are we more willing to plead them down on these cases? Are we not? The whole point is we're just trying to avoid prosecutor shopping. Where someone gets a reputation of, oh, I know this prosecutor is going to be plea on this type of case more if you have very frequent. Defenders that are coming into to the office a lot. Other policies define a timeline for issuing return for investigation. This is probably one of the biggest ones related back to that domestic violence piece. It needs to be prioritized and being able to get that additional information. In case a case needs to be brought in a DV situation. So being able to to shorten that timeframe of getting back to the police departments, they can do that. And I think I pasted that twice. So that's how important it is, is I accidentally put it down twice. And then transition and to entirely cloud based system for the saving, sharing and reviewing of body cam footage. That's just a long range IT investment that will be worth it. I have a few others. Continue to work with CarpeL, their their software provider on developing an automatic trigger for the. It's called the walking it through process. I don't want to get too technical. But it highlights if an individual is a repeat offender, and it basically helps guide them a little bit on that process and can save some time. Also, as legal AI software becomes available, invest, implement in limited uses AI software. There's, I think it's pretty famous now, a lawyer for a case entered it into ChatGPT and it created case citations that weren't real. And so we're not saying start using ChatGPT. It it's still in its primitiveness. But much like early internet days, we're in the very beginning stage of a lot of AI expansion. So as legal AI software becomes available, I would highly recommend in investing in it. But you can use ChatGPT on, hey, are there any edits or errors in what I've written? There's some limited uses that you can do to start saving time. Couple community justice pieces, continue to partner with YCC Family Crisis Center in addressing domestic violence. Continue to work on the homeless court program. It's it's faced some challenges, so it's deciding if it's if if you want to continue to try to make that work. But in the long term, ideally improving the usage rate of it. If it doesn't go up, then you need to evaluate the feasibility and if it's worth your time investment. Staffing designated intern or support staff, this is the piece that they've already implemented to start reviewing that footage, surveillance. Dash cam, other audio visual, because. It's not worth it to pay a prosecutor salary to review body cam footage when you could pay somebody else to do that. So it saves the city money. And then consider offering paid internships with law students. Essentially, how can we build a pipeline of lawyers coming in and getting more and more exposure to the prosecutor's office? Those are really the recommendations. Any thoughts that you have? I do want to reiterate, I I I don't normally say this. The team works very hard. I can tell it by the. By the stress when I come in, they're like, oh, shoot, I got to have that meeting. I got so much going on. So I it's it's palpable at times. They are working hard. And so I think there's some of these initial implementations that can be used or recommendations. That can be implemented, but then long term, just having the discussion on on if it's worth the financial investment of more staffing.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
And back to your other slide, and and just as a caveat, I am on the board of the YCC, but what do you mean by expanding where possible?
Continue to grow that partner collaboration and partnership. I mean, my own bias, when you have law enforcement working more hand in hand with these DV providers and being of a support to them. It's also there's a role that the prosecutor's office can play. And so I think part of it is also mutual education of where could the prosecutor's office improve through? Better knowing and understanding DV best practices like trauma informed care.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
So as it pertains to our most. Our best fit comparison is being West Valley City. And you mentioned a couple of things. It seems that it might start with the police department and the direction that the chief provides, we're going to we're going to write these things up. And we're going to let these things go. And then once the violation is written up, there's another conversation in the prosecutor's office around. Here's this line and below this line, we we don't prosecute, above this line we do. And you talked about that in the in the vein of consistency of application of.
Yeah.
Prosecution. Do you have insight and do you understand how comparable? Ogden City's Police Department is with West Valleys and our prosecutors and the line that they draw with West Valley. Have we got similar? Requirements as far as the police department and then what we prosecute and what we don't once it's in the prosecutor's office?
It's a good question. I didn't research on the maybe the standards of the two police departments and how that funnels up the the caseload pipeline. So it is a good question. If there is an answer from the team, I would defer to you, but I that wasn't initially in my my research. Yep. I'll tag you in. Okay.
The whole idea of the line of what when you fight, when you go to trial, when you don't is has been a shifting standard over time. And that's because of reality. We've actually doubled our staff in the last ten years, doubled the attorneys, doubled the staff. And and that's why this study was so important to figure out if we really had gotten there or not. But there was a time before we doubled our attorneys and doubled our staffs that we had to settle almost everything. There was just no. There was just no time to try cases. And so now that we've gotten to a higher level of staffing, we're trying a lot more cases. And and we're going to trial and we're ready to go to trial on more cases and therefore more cases are settled at a higher level. And so when you talk about what the line should be, it it really is tied to the to the staffing issue. And that line has changed and the and the standard has raised over the last decade because of it. And we continue to raise that and will need to. And so one of the reasons why I wanted to get this study is to figure out what's the sweet spot, what's the industry standard of that line? So that we can work towards that. Because we don't want to be. We don't want to be an easy target just to overload our circuits and then, you know, get off easy. We also. Don't want to just, you know. Go to the mat on everything that's unreasonable. And so that's that's this this whole study was trying to help us get to that sweet spot. So that the question you ask is really the whole point of the whole thing, and it's a shifting standard.
Other questions? So yeah, don't go far, so.
If we do bring it up to the five, what does that bring the caseload down?
Yes. I go back to my immediate numbers. Yeah, I mean, it would take it to roughly six hundred and if we're going based on last year's numbers. It would be six hundred and trying to do the math in my head right now. Forty, six hundred fifty almost. That's and that's why I'm saying over time getting to five, because I'm anticipating continued increase. Because right now you're back to pre pandemic levels. I'm gauging based on what the last few years are looking like, that it continues to slowly edge up. If you can really get to seven hundred cases per misdemeanor cases per prosecutor, I would consider that a win. Ideally, you want to get closer to six hundred, but seven hundred would still, in my opinion, be a win.
Then also.
So then you would start with one extra prosecutor.
Clerks and the other people behind them, yeah.
Yeah. And so again, you wouldn't want to just get two prosecutors and call it a day. You would need the support staff. And in some ways, you almost want to start with the support staff because it's a not as expensive of an initial staffing investment.
So my question is for Gary. What do you envision? Of how we'll implement this study and how do you what what plan do you have? You got a plan yet? Are you thinking about a plan?
Yeah, yeah, we do have. We do have a plan. This study has has confirmed some of my worries about what what direction we're going in. But some things that he brought up were totally new and things we hadn't really concentrated on. And so those things are especially interesting to me. And so in kind of the two categories, we have the staffing and then all of these other types of ideas to increase. And so those things are especially interesting to me. And so in kind of the two categories, we have the staffing and then all of these other types of ideas to increase efficiency and all that kind of stuff. And so the staffing is something that we'll bring up during the budget process in future years. And if it's available to, to add more staff, then we'll, we'll do that at the appropriate time. Um, all these other policies, we have already started looking at some of them very seriously. For example, he talks about having a database. Turns out in the civil side, we already have that database. We just need to implement it for the prosecutor's office. We didn't really think that was something that was gonna serve them. Now we're convinced it will. And so we're kinda taking those steps. He, he had, um, he had talked about, I don't know if it came up on these slides about we have some inefficiency in the courtroom technology. And so we're already starting to implement that. The uh, one of the big staffing multipliers was to have somebody do that evidence, the, the body cams and all that kind of stuff. And so the administration found some money to hire a part-time employee to kind of figure out if that's really gonna work. And that may turn into a full-time position in the future if it proves it's, it's worth. And then all the other things, especially this policy concept, we're gonna have a series of meetings with the prosecutors and the staff depending on what area it's focused on. And we're gonna go through on each of these and try to implement them in kind of a staged manner. And pick off the stuff we can do right away without additional um, resources and start to implement those things. And I think this, this concept of having a single standard that all the prosecutors are going to live to, so there's not this prosecutor shopping concept is something we've talked about a long time. But we now have some, some thoughts on how to finalize it and how to, how to kind of um, make it, make it firm. And so, so we really appreciate the council going through this process and helping us have this management study. It's something that we'll use as a template for many years to come. We don't expect to jump up to all the staff or jump to all the different policy things at, at first. But implement it over time and kind of see how it goes. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, if, if we look at your department as a law firm.
Yeah.
If it were a law firm, if, if a law firm of your size, would it have a practice manager?
Um, it would have an office manager. And we do, my, um, my assistant is the office manager of the prosecutor's staff. And then Greg is the manager over the prosecutors themselves. And then I, I supervise all those people. And so um, we do in a sense have what you're suggesting.
Yeah, I was just with some of the policy and technology and, and exploring internships and that sort of thing. And that's
Yeah.
Somebody else's area, they'd be better invested in, in that sort of thing than you are, for example, or somebody that could otherwise be prosecuting cases.
So, and, and I have been involved in many technology efforts, both in the citywide and in the prosecutor's office. We've already, we've already kind of multiplied our staff many times by the technology we've already implemented. So I think actually we do have some experience in doing those things in-house and we get a lot of help from IT.
Yeah, yeah, I would expect you did. And I just trying to free you up to
I know.
You know.
Yeah.
Exercise your expertise and not be looking at new technologies, that's all. I was just curious.
And these are just some of the notable recommendations. We have two or three dozen recommendations on the full report of other little things that can be done to alleviate bandwidth. So the key is start where you can, but I just felt like needed to overemphasize that in the long term, you won't be able to do. Ultimately, staffing might be what you have to do to get to the final destination. So.
As to your analogy in a law firm, the law firm I was at when I was younger. I was the guy who was trying to implement the technology. And so for me, it's kind of natural to be looking for those kind of solutions. So.
Awesome. Any final thoughts? It was really a pleasure to be able to make the drives back up north and see y'all again. Um, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Becky. All right. Um, onto the next, uh, I, I think Heather and maybe Justin both are coming up to keep talking to us about compensation.
Yes.
And benefits and all the other stuff.
All right. Thank you for letting me present this information to you. Um, we're gonna kind of go over a lot of topics tonight. Um, so we're gonna kind of go over some terms and definitions, uh, our roadmap, our initiation, um, and outreach. Our current conditions, our proposal, the salary schedule findings, we're gonna talk about titles a little bit and then our next steps and some suggestions that we have. So, um, a lot of these terms and definitions, um, I use on a daily basis when we look at compensation throughout the city. Um, but you probably wanna look at the, the ones in the middle of the screen about their salary structure, benchmark jobs, internal equity and our midpoint. Um, we'll kind of talk about salaries, our salary surveys as well. Um, but there's a lot of scope, um, when we're talking about the whole presentation. Um, we'll kind of touch base on some of these terms and definitions as we go through. So we're at the tail end of the roadmap, um, for this study. So uh, Justin and I are tying up some loose ends and then, um, we're, we're ready to roll. So uh, we have looked at all of the positions right now and to make sure the internal hierarchy is, our equity is in line with the entire city. Um, but now we have to, actually have to look at each individual employee, um, to make sure that there's no compression issues, all of that stuff. So we're just doing the positions right now, wrapping up that, and then we'll jump into the individual employees of how that will impact, um, each employee separately. So just an overview, um, we went out to RFP for McGrath. Um, back in July of two thousand twenty-three, we, and the study got initiated in September of twenty-three. There was a huge collection pot that we had to get from, um, so employee data, we submitted salary schedules, job descriptions, position questionnaires. And we also initiated kickoff meetings with the department director, myself and division managers for each area. Um, the kickoff meetings lasted four days. And we talked about philosophy of compensation, what was working with their division, what wasn't working, where were we losing people to, who were we recruiting from? Um, just a lot of information that McGrath needed to understand the context of the situation before they could kind of do a deep dive um, for each individual position. And so, um, position questionnaires were completed, um, November sixth through December first. And McGrath requested a questionnaire to be filled out by each position, not each employee. Um, so there was quite a bit of employees that completed one. And we kind of, um, talked about, uh, a little bit that, uh, the maintenance tech in parks. Um, they completed one, but a maintenance tech in sewer and stormwater also completed one. Because even though they're both maintenance techs, they do separate job complexities and their jobs are completely different from one another. So we did have that completed. So, and just a recap, just because you probably weren't involved, the position questionnaire. So I wanted to give you the scope of what kind of questions were asked um, for these in employees that completed one. So, um, we talked about job complexity, their consequence of errors. Um, if they dealt with finance or budgets within their division or department. Um, their leadership, the hours of work. So there was a lot of complexity in regards to the position questionnaire. Uh, they told us about an hour to two hours, it would be to complete one. Um, so they did do a deep dive into each position, uh, to get the full scope of duties of what they were performing. Uh, so they use the position questionnaires a lot, um, to help if we could not find an external comparison with the outside market. They use the position questionnaire and gave them like a, a point system. So depending on their point system and the severity of their position, job complexities, they're placed in our new proposed structure. Um, according to their position questionnaire, if that makes any sense. Okay. So just so you're aware, um, our assessment of our current conditions, so we have right now six hundred and eighty-one budgeted full-time employees. We have over two hundred different titles throughout this city. Um, we have three employee groups, not counting elected officials, but uh, we have merit service, non-merit service and sworn public safety. And then just to recap, we collected data from twenty-five market peers, um, through surveys. Uh, TechNet is our compensation, um, software that we use across the Wasatch front. Um, so other municipalities can kind of dump their data in there and we can pull reports to see if we can do internal benchmarking and whatnot. So, um, McGrath had access to TechNet if we couldn't get information from other municipalities. And then there were some municipalities that refused to provide their data, so we had to go out to grammar requests. So that kind of delayed some of our information, getting it back to us. Okay, um, here's, sorry, that's kind of hard to read. Um, here is a recap of our turnover rates. Um, the FY twenty-four is as of May twenty-second, when I pulled the data. Um, so you can kind of see the, the percentage differences from each year. And I kind of broke it down by department for the last fiscal, three fiscal years. Um, and then for police and fire, I broke it out between merit and sworn. So you can also see that as well. Um, the McGrath did say that an average turnover rate for, um, just a company is about ten percent. So you wanna stay within that ten percent threshold. Anything above that is a little bit concerning. Um, below that, good for you, but typically an average is about a ten percent. So, um, our proposal, uh, for FY twenty-five, uh, we set aside four point, well, Justin. Justin said aside four point six million dollars to do these market adjustments because we didn't know what we didn't know, because we got the data a little bit later than we expected. Uh, we were hoping to have all this data back in February, but with all the delays and um, they had to do grammar requests that kind of pushed back our timeline a little bit. So, uh, we're hoping and recommending, um, to implement the salary tables and pay step schedules for police, um, for sworn. Police and fire and then general employees as well. Uh, we're recommending that the pay grade, all employees be moved to the grade minimum or the closest step if they're public safety. Um, we're hoping to implement the recommended job title changes, um, that McGrath provided. Um, and then up to a four percent for general employees who didn't receive at least a four percent to bring their, to their minimum. Um, and then the sworn group, public safety would be eligible for their step increase on their anniversary date. There we go. Okay. Um, so the salary schedule findings, when I was talking to Melina, who's our project manager with McGrath. She stated, um, that when they do the initial study, they look at our minimum midpoint and maximum. And that can kind of give us a clear indication if we're competitive with the outside market. So when they conducted the salary, um, surveys, they determined, um, that some of the positions, of course, were not being competitive with the market. So they are proposing a new salary schedule and that can, that, um, information was considered uh, when they provided the new schedule that they've built, um, and it's gonna be average to the market. So we're not gonna be top dog, we're not gonna be the bottom of the barrel, we're just gonna be average. So here's just kind of a, a sample of, um, where the firefighters, police officers, and just one example of our normal merit position, uh, the customer service rep. Um, so you can kind of see for firefighters, for instance, um, from step zero to a step zero for fire um, is a thirteen point five one percent increase. Um, cause we knew that we were behind in the firefighter market. Um, and then police, because we've made so much adjustments throughout the last couple fiscal years. So a police officer's step zero to a zero is only eight point one six and it's kind of straight across the board. Um, it's a little bit different for fires, you can tell, because when we implemented Evergreen, they suggested that we have steps. Sorry, that they had, um, I don't even remember what we called it. Progression steps, so that the steps were higher at their entry point instead of toward the end of the career, so that we could actually retain people. And then that they would stay. But when I was talking to Melina with, um, regarding the firefighter schedule, she said with the external market, we wanna make sure that we mirror what our competitors are doing. And so that's a four percent spread. So we're kind of falling in line with the same police officer steps to fire, if that makes any sense. So it's gonna be kind of a mirror. So, um, here's the new fire schedule, um, that you can kind of see. Uh, so you can see the step progression for each position is about a four percent spread instead of all across the board. Um, and we are extending our steps, uh, for this group. Um, so for going from a firefighter to a firefighter paramedic right now is about a thirty percent difference. And then going from a firefighter to a fire engineer currently right now is about a twenty percent difference. Um, so the market, we knew we were gonna be behind with the fire department. Um, so yeah, this, this, these are significant impacts to, uh, their annual salary. Oops, sorry. Okay, so here's an example, um, for a firefighter. So, um, so for currently, they're gonna be in firefighter step two, so that's the blue column. And they're making eighteen point eight or eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Um, so come August, if this gets implemented, the new hourly wage for the new step firefighter two would be twenty dollars and thirty cents. So that's a seven point seven four percent change from our old set system to our new system. And then come December on their anniversary date. So this, and December of FY twenty-five, they would move to a firefighter step three. So that means that they'd be making twenty-one, twenty-one and eleven cents an hour, and that's a four percent change. So, and you can kind of see the current steps that we have on this side, um, versus the new step schedule um, that McGrath is recommending that we implement. So try to break it down a little bit more simple, because it is kind of complicated if you are not familiar with the step schedule.
So, so the, is it December is an arbitrary anniversary date or?
Yeah, it's just, I just.
So if their anniversary date was September, they would get that right away.
Yep, yep.
Or if it wasn't until July of next year.
Correct. Yes. Okay, so, um, here's the police schedule. Um, the McGrath did state that the lieutenants and the division commanders are actually within market. Um, but we added a step to be competitive with the outside market to make sure that we can adjust it. So the police officer step ranges are from like eight point one six to about nine point seven four percent. Um, compared to our old schedule to the new schedule. Um, and so that's just a kind of a recap of where the police schedule is. Um, and then I also provided another example for the police officer. Um, so if they're currently in a step eight, they're making thirty-seven dollars and two cents. In August, they'll move to the new step eight, which is forty dollars and four cents. Um, so that's an eight point one six percent change. And then on their anniversary date in February, um, they would move to the next step if they met the meat expectations of their, um, halogen evaluation, which is their evaluation that they have every year, then they would move to the step nine, which is forty-one and sixty-five cents. So that's a four percent step increase. And then you can see, of course, the, the new, um, salary schedule and then the old one that we, well, not the old one, the current one that we have in place. Okay, um, this is gonna be the general schedule. Um, and we are going.
So I, I do have a question. So when we heard you talk before, you talked about that a lot of people were leaving in that for one to one point two seven years to, I don't know, three point five years. One to three years.
Uh huh.
So taking that or given that, was Evergreen that far off as far as trying to pay more upfront to get people to stay or? I, I mean, the philosophy is much different, obviously. So.
Yeah.
Explain maybe why we've gone back to a different way.
Yeah, so that's just, so for fire, because we, when we were implementing Evergreen, that was when we were bleeding so heavily for police department. So we actually never implemented Evergreen's recommendation for their steps of being a progressive step of like seven, nine. Because, because that's what our competitors and our outside agencies weren't doing. And so the chief was worried that we would lose people to other entities because we weren't following, like we weren't mirroring them. And so we never implemented what Evergreen recommended for their steps. We did the amounts, but we actually did the progression of four percent across the board instead of doing that. We have for police, but fire, we implemented what Evergreen recommended. And that's why we're kind of losing a lot of people, because, you know, they can make a lot more money going somewhere else towards the end of their career than staying with us. But then, you know, some people are leaving in the early years of their, of their employment with us. So it's kind of all over the place. But yes, I, I do have the, um, finalization of the final report from McGrath. So it kind of gives you a deep dive of like the turnover rates and like the philosophy of surrounding that. I'm just kind of finishing that up and then I'll provide that to you guys so that you can have that information as well.
So council staff hasn't seen it yet?
Yeah, no, I, I just literally got it like this morning. So I, I have to just double check that grammar and everything spelled right. So, yeah. Okay, um, so here's just a, a general implement, implementation. Oh. Oh, sorry. Oh, okay, sorry. No, you're good. I'm just jumping around. Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, this is just the general schedule. So we're going from, uh, thirty-nine pay grades currently that Evergreen recommended now down to twenty-three. Um, so we're cutting our grades significantly. Um, so there's a lot of positions, there's a positions that kind of fall in the same grade um, that they wouldn't have before. Um, so, uh, there's, there's complexity, but typically there's a, a seven percent change from the grades. So from one hundred to one oh five, there's a seven percent spread. And then from min to max, it's a forty-five percent spread. Um, so they, they also provide that in the report of why we should do those percentages. So they'll kind of explain that as well if you need a, a deeper dive into. So they'll kind of explain that as well. If you need a deeper dive into why they did that philosophy. So here's just a general example. So I just pulled, we've pulled a maintenance tech. So we have two examples. So just mind you, one line. So a maintenance tech right now is only going to be receiving a 4% because they're already currently within that salary range. So they're at 2733. And if you can look at the very right-hand column, the new grade is from 2091 to 3032. So they're already within that range. And so we're not going to bump them up to the minimum because they're already at the minimum. So they're only going to be receiving a 4%. So that would go from 2733 to 2842 an hour. The example two is a maintenance tech that is not even close to the minimum. So we're going to bump them up to the new minimum come August. So they're currently making 1915 an hour. They'll bump up to 2091 an hour, which is a 9.19% increase. Because we're just trying to make them competitive with the outside market. So there's that one. No, you're good.
I mean, I'm not, but going from $19 an hour to $20 an hour is a 9% increase?
Really? I got the math guy right here.
But going from 27 to third to 28 is a 4% increase.
Yeah, we do every, well.
It's not.
My, my.
They will get the 4%.
Yeah.
Oh, they'll get, okay. I'm like, no, that's not right.
Yeah. So if, if they're, if they're currently at 2733, they'd already be within the new range. So they would get a 4%, which would take with the 2842. And if they're at 1915, that's below what their new minimum is. So to get them to the new minimum, it'd be a 9% increase to their salary to get them to that.
Perfect. Sorry.
No, thank you. Okay. And I'm actually going to pass it to Justin. He's going to kind of explain the cost.
Before we go that way, can you get real for me again? Can you tell me what a 100 or a 105, what is that job? What does that person do?
What do you mean? I'm so sorry. The 105?
If I'm hired by the city and I'm a 100.
Oh, great, great. Okay.
Employee, what am I doing?
Yeah. So, um, we don't have actually anyone in the 100. Right now, our lowest paid position is going to be in the 105 and that's the customer service rep. So that's like our cashier, the utility billing, cashiers that take payment over the phone. And I think that's actually the only one that that's in 105. Then we bump up to like 115. I don't know. I've been looking at data for so long, they're kind of getting a little bit blended. So I don't remember what's in 115 off the top of my head.
The staffing document, once we have it complete, it'll show the, the titles of, of the positions and what grade they would fall into. And so then you'd be able to tie that back to what, so your higher grades are going to be your management, your directors, managers. You know, and then, so and then the mid-grade, you're going to find your supervisors, you're going to find, you know, a lot of your, your maintenance technicians. So like a 120 is where like the maintenance technicians would fall in, in the, that grade. So a lot of technician level type positions would be in that, those 120s, 125s.
Okay. Thanks.
Just depends on, and that's where the study kind of, depending on what the market, where they put them. And then depending on what that midpoint would look like, that's the grade that it got assigned to. So they built out the grades and then they said, okay, this is what that position should make and spotted it in that grade. And so then on the, on the cost, so I pulled this as of last week. So we, what I did is we went through. Obviously in the, the, but the tentative budget that's been adopted, we've placed $4.6 million citywide to be able to use for whatever implementation we ends up getting adopted. And so to run the numbers, what we did is we went through and I pulled all of everybody where they're currently at, what were they going to be as of, as of July or June 30th? We went through and figured out what step public safety is on and what salaries employees are on. And then from there, we went through and, and figured out where they'd be moving to. So if they fall below their new minimum, what that cost would be to bring them to their new minimum. If they're already within their new range, 4% increase for public safety was their closest step. So again, like a police officer, if they're currently step one, changing to the new step one would be an 8% increase. And then for fire, same thing, step one to a new step one is a 10%, I think 10 or 11%. And so we calculated all those out, also added in the cost for benefits. So these costs that are show here is the cost to not only do the increases, but also the benefits associated with those. And then we went through in the general fund, we had programmed in just over 3.1 million for increases. And based on my last time I ran the numbers, this is a little bit higher than we, when I first looked at this. Cause we've, we've had to go through and there's been some back and forth with McGrath and there were some adjustments made. And as we've tied that back out, the total cost in the general funds, 3.2 million. So it's about $85,000 higher than what I initially ran. So still pretty close or a little bit high, about 85,000 higher than what's in the proposed budget. I apologize. And then you can see all the other funds, how they fall in. So the total citywide to implement with doing all these pieces, which would be bringing all the general employees to their new minimum. Anybody that doesn't get an increase with that bring to minimum, giving them a 4%. And then doing the closest step from fire and police, and then also programming in a next step for them on their anniversary. We're looking at just under 4.75 million citywide to, to do that implementation. Is there any questions on that slide before we move off? I know there's a lot of numbers. And in the, the schedule A1 that would be proposed with the final budget adoption, we would make the adjustments within, in that schedule to reflect what's needed here. So a lot of, in, in a few of those funds, the cost is less than what I, what we had originally programmed. The general fund was slightly more.
Medical, does that, I mean, that strikes me as, how many people are in medical?
There are.
That closest step and next step money is pretty significant.
There are, I can't remember the total number. I want to say 30, 30 or 40 or maybe higher. I can't, I'd have to look at the staffing document, but there is a decent amount of paramedics. All the paramedics are there and then there are a few firefighters as well in the, in the medical fund.
Okay. And then another recommendation that McGrath provided is that we modernize our titles. She is going to kind of give you a deep dive into the philosophy regarding that next week. She'll be here on July 9th to kind of give you a recap. I did ask her to touch base on this topic because I know that we've talked about it a little bit. So I just wanted to give you an idea of what she gave me an example of, and I thought that it was actually pretty needed. I mean, I, I needed it. So she said practically speaking, you know, others use job titles to make decisions about you. So consider this, if you were seeking to improve your tennis game, who would you rather work with? A tennis instructor, a tennis pro, or a tennis performance coach? Titles influence how we judge and how are judged by others. So she did kind of explain a little bit of her philosophy with me, but she did, she's going to give you a little bit more of an overview of that next week. So here's just.
Before you move on, I, I'm not going to be here next week and I just, I want to talk a little bit about that because I mean, I understand what you're saying and, but I just, I'm going to get it out here so that these guys can hear it. But part of the, the problem to me is that we're using things like tech net to do comparisons in, in market peers. And if our titles aren't the same, then we're back to, are we in the right ballpark or not? You know, are we, and so I, I have a hard, I just, my biggest thing is, is that a deputy director is a deputy director. And, and so.
So I do have to, so tech net, they actually just have a series of jobs listed. And then you can actually click into it and it will give me like basic duties of that position. So it's not based on what I title it, it's based on what tech net has everyone. So they have police officer, one, two, and three. But we just call them police officers because we don't have a master police officer anymore. So I put the minimum and the maximum between that. And then I have to put what the city calls that position. So when like Orem will pull our data, they'll know that I don't have a police officer three, that we just call them police officers. So then sometimes municipalities will call me and say, oh, do you have a three? Cause I don't see it listed in tech net. Nope, I don't have a three. So we do actually use for tech net, we don't use our own titles. We use what everyone is using. So if they call it a cashier, but we call it a customer service rep. Everyone and all the other municipalities will put in what those job duties are. And we try to follow based on what that position is, and then we put our data in what we call it. So every single time when I do benchmarking, it's based on, on what the job is in tech net, not versus what we call them. If that makes any sense. It's complicated, but I've been doing it for a long time. So I know exactly, we, I don't look at.
I mean, I understand that. I just, I, but it, but when you look at an organizational chart, let's say in Salt Lake City, you know that there's a director and a deputy director. And okay, there might be police one, two, and three, but you know what the organizational structure is. And so I just, I, I just, I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. So, and, and I'm not going to be here. So I would all, whatever y'all decide is fine.
So are you worried, Marcia, that, let me see if I can, if I'm getting this right. So if we've got directors and, and.
Now, now going to be called executive.
Executive directors, all of a sudden we're behind in what we're paying them because we've added the word executive to it?
Well, I just don't think there's a good, I just don't think that, I don't know that they're getting at what, what they want to be getting at.
With the titles?
Yeah. So for instance, you said, okay, well, everybody on Indeed is looking up, you know, this executive director. Well, it's really not an executive director. It's a director in, in a city. You know, I'm thinking I'm going to be top dog, but no, I'm, I'm with other, you know, six other of the same people. So I, I just don't know that, I just, I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned about the, the, the title piece, but. But I could, I mean, maybe, maybe they could spend some time with me tomorrow and talk to me.
Okay. And I also wanted to add, when I do benchmarking, when we used to do internally, we wouldn't look at top titles. Cause everyone calls everything, everything. So I look at 70% of their job duties. If that's a match, that's a match. So I look at, I click into the job. I make sure that their primary functions are the position that I'm benchmarking it against. And I know that McGrath looked at the PQ, so the position questionnaires, the job descriptions, they evaluated all of that. So I know that titles are a little bit different. So, but yeah, she'll touch base. And if you need more information, I can get that from Melina too. So.
Good. Great.
Okay. So like we touched base and they're recommending certain titles to be changed. So all of our department directors will be executive directors. And then our deputy directors would be assistant executive directors. And then division managers would be just division directors. Because we're, we're in charge of an entire department or division itself. So that's why it's a division director. And then they're kind of all over the, not all over the place, but we have administrators, we have specialists, we have coordinators. We're going to keep a lot of like our maintenance tech, maintenance techs, because we know what they are. Equipment operators are going to kind of stay the same. Engineering is going to kind of stay the same. Cause that's kind of a, across the board, like our, our external market comparison. So, so those are just some examples.
I'm so sorry. Can I just clarify? So we're talking about something, so are they meeting with you tomorrow? And then next week we'll have somebody present to us. I'm sorry. They were saying tomorrow, maybe.
I just, I'm only here tomorrow. And then I'm gone for two hours.
Oh, okay. I'm just getting confused that we have a different meeting. I'm sorry. Okay.
I just, I was trying to touch base, understanding.
Yeah.
Reiterate again, what we're getting for these title changes? What's that going to do for us?
They, they just say that it's, it's going to be a nice thing for recruitment and retention. A lot of people look at titles when they're looking in Indeed and they think that it's a demotion if they come here. So if we post something and it's only a coordinator, but it really should be an assistant director to arts, culture and events, or something like that, that they would be more inclined to apply than just apply for a coordinator. Because they think it's a demotion rather than looking for our job, even though the, the job duties might be the same. But they think that it's, it's a demotion coming to them. So.
It's lipstick on a pig.
I mean, if you want to put it that way, I'm. Okay. Um, so, okay. So the next steps, we're kind of like in phases 10 and 11. So we're just wrapping up a couple loose ends. And then I'll get you the final report so that you can review it. And then Melina, our project manager is actually going to be here in person next Tuesday to kind of do her presentation. I told her she has an hour, so I don't know what she'll be presenting, but I know that titles is one of them. So, um, and that's, I have that one. So then I just wanted to kind of recap. McGrath did provide some suggestions just to make sure that we stay competitive and we don't fall behind the curve. So they're recommending that we look at a CPIU every year or another economic indicator that we evaluate every year to make sure that we're still in competitiveness with our external market. Urban. Yeah. And then the typical lifespan of a schedule is about three to five years is what she said. A typical review would mean that we need to review that. And then given the current competitive market, the city is recommended to do a market update every three years. But depending on turnover, other economic factors, we may do that sooner or we could push that back a year. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions?
I do. And I want to apologize for the lipstick on a pig comment, but I, I do. Well, it came in a way. I'm sorry. I had a brain fade there.
Maybe I'll come back to you while I'm talking. Well, I appreciate, you know, your sentiment like, oh, maybe it doesn't mean much. But I think if we're looking for any way to improve retention of our employees, I'm all for it. And you know, I think that's, we're very concerned about that. Right? And so if the consultants say that that's something that helps with retention, then I think it's worth a shot.
Yeah, that, that's why I apologize. Cause I, I think there is probably some merit in, you know, you don't want to be something that you don't, you think is beneath you, I guess. So I guess for that perspective, I kind of understand what you're saying.
And I know some employees don't care about titles, but some employees do. Like they'll leave because their title is something much greater. And then it looks better on their resume than it would here, even though they're doing the same job complexity. It, it does matter to some employees. So.
That's an interesting play on psychology. You know, will they leave if the title isn't right, but the pay is right?
I've actually had employees say that a lot of the, I mean, yes, I mean, not a lot. I mean, but I have had a couple of employees say that they're going because they think it's a higher position. And then they leave and they're like, actually, my job complexity was far more complex here than it is at my, my new job.
I mean, huh. As you think of like a trajectory of your whole career, it might be something like, maybe that's something you wanted to achieve eventually in your career. Or what would my next position be if I have that title? Right? So it's kind of like thinking about, because when I look at like the fire and the place, I'm like, oh, you look at someone's whole career right there on one page. I don't know if all people think of it that way, but it is sort of what you think as you're working. You only have a certain amount of time for your working life. Most people do. Other people work forever. But, um, you know, so I think that's kind of part of the psychology that I'm thinking of.
Yeah. That's interesting.
There was, I actually have two questions. Early back in your presentation, you talked about a, you know, 10% turnover is kind of a, kind of a normal thing. And I'm old and I kind of remember back in the time when like Angela was saying, you know, people didn't really change jobs very often. What's, is there any way to understand the, the trend of how those turnovers are coming more often and why? And is there a way to deal with it or?
Yeah. So we, we have a wage and benefits committee that we have within the city to come up with different types of benefits for recruitment and retention. But I mean, I remember when I first started and I worked part-time, there was never a full-time vacancy, never. I mean, I waited and waited and waited and then they had to create a position. Like that's, that's how I got in is because a position was created. And so it is way different. I mean, I've been here almost 15 years. I mean, now we're constantly having, I mean, job pushes are weekly, sometimes daily. And I mean, I had a full-time employee that lasted two days and gave them their notice and didn't even tell anyone, just left their keys. I mean, I think it's just the mindset of where we're at right now. I mean, we have different generations that are working for us and some people don't want to work. I mean, they want to be on YouTube or, you know, TikTok all day. And I mean, it is not, not a generational thing, but I'm just saying that I think it's just different. It's just different.
Yep. The other question that's, that's always kind of been in the back of my mind when we do these things, these benchmarks, these compensation studies, whatever you want to call them, we're going to react to our peers that are around. And it's going to foul up their benchmark because we're going to now be higher or whatever we're going to do. How does, how do we make sure we're not screwing up the market by doing these benchmarks?
So, so I just want to reiterate that we're asking for average. We're not going to be top dog. We are average. And that's last year's data. So if you hear complaints that I can leave for West Valley for, you know, $15 more an hour, it's because we're not top dog. We're, we're average. So, so I mean, that's why I want to make sure that you understand that I'm not, we're never going to be top dog. I mean, I, I don't want.
Do it too. And they always want to be the top dog. And that's kind of.
I mean, I, I went to a Wasatch comp meeting with a bunch of municipalities and HR people. And I remember sitting there and people were fighting that we, we're telling you, the, the entity was saying, we already know that we're going to try to be top dog. And I'm like, go at it. Because then you guys are going to try to keep fighting back and forth, and then you're going to elevate that position. And then we're going to start losing people. And like, it's a constant battle. I mean. And like, it's a constant battle, I mean. Yeah, oh, and I, I honestly, I'm not saying this by any means whatsoever, but I'm just saying that. When we're loo- losing to smaller entities, that's where I get concerned, if we're losing people to the same type of, you know, size of municipality. The same type of call volume, that's unfortunate, but if I'm losing to, you know, smaller municipalities in the lo- around the local area, that's where I'm concerned. So, so yeah, that's. Yeah, so when we actually did the Evergreen study way back when, um, we tried to actually do peer comparisons with private entities. And they will not provide that, they don't need, they don't have to provide that data, we were just pulling information that they wouldn't even provide. So when we did McGrath, they did ask if we wanted to look at, you know, private entities, but she point-blank told me that, good luck. Like, they're not gonna give you any information, so, I, and I knew that we wouldn't get information, but, I mean, I do hear employees say that, you know, they can. Jump ship and go to Hiller Forest Base, but they're also paying, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a month on health insurance, and our health insurance is free. So, so you know, the grass sometimes isn't always greener, because I've had, you know, municipality, or not municipalities, I've had employees leave for, you know, a private. Um, a big corporation that I know the, you know, and for two dollars more an hour, and then they actually start applying for positions at the city. Because then they realize, oh my gosh, like, a big chunk of my paycheck, even though I'm getting two, paid two dollars more an hour on paper, I'm actually paying more on benefits. So a lot of employees don't look at that, um, they just look at what's getting be, put on their paycheck, so.
Great, thank you.
So just looking over the turnover rates, um, you know, public services. I, I did the math here, they, they have twenty-five percent of the employees, but almost thirty-seven percent of the turnover rate. So, um, do you feel like what, what you're doing with the, the compensation? For the, the public services side of it, is it gonna help?
Yeah, I actually met with Justin and actually his whole team, and we actually went through it individually, so I went by division, and then we did it as a department whole. Um, I think it's gonna be a tremendous impact, I mean, the fact of the matter, when you can go work it in and out for twenty-one dollars an hour. And we're paying our maintenance eighteen forty-seven an hour, and they're dealing with horrible bathrooms, they're dealing with, you know, homeless cleanup, they're dealing with. You know, I mean, they've been assaulted in the parks, I mean, I can't even imagine having someone getting paid eighteen forty-seven for that type of work. So, yes, I think that the entry level, especially for the, the turnover that we have in that area, because it is high-level work. I mean, you know what I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's, it's hard work, I mean, even seasonals, I haven't even had a seasonal last, what, four hours? I think that was the quickest turnover that we've had for a seasonal, because it was too hot, they didn't wanna mow, it was too labor-intensive. So, I mean, if a seasonal's only lasted four hours, but, you know, I think it's, it's just, I, I really do think that it'll make a humongous impact for public services.
Great. Any other questions?
I did ask Heather to be prepared to, and the directors are here, some of them, to talk about any of the new positions that you have questions about. Um, so, I don't know if you have that list handy, or if you wanna.
Grab my binder.
I'd say eat now.
We're not gonna talk about this, or do we wanna?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Just keep talking.
Okay, okay, I, do you have that list, I mean, Glenn, oh, you have it, okay, okay. Okay, okay, so do, what information are you looking for, I guess? Just a recap of why they're asking for those positions, or, okay. Okay, let's see, I have, I have.
Is there any way to put it up on the screen, I don't know?
Taylor, do you wanna come sit, I don't know, we're gonna talk about engineering, Justin, you wanna sit, I don't, okay. Okay, so for the senior construction, hmm, you moved it, now I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, so, um, senior construction and development, um, Taylor, do, yeah, why don't you come up, I, I have the managers here, so. The, the requests have come through the managers, and so I felt it was necessary that they should be here, and you can hear directly from them. On, on why we have the requests, so, Taylor?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk about some of these, we've, uh, had the unique opportunity recently to take on a couple of pretty significant construction. Uh, projects that we were really excited about, one being Marshall White, the other one is the Wonder Block. And as we've gone through and looked at the way that our, uh, different areas are structured, and how we complete construction projects, we noticed there's a need. So what we started looking at in that need is, there a way that we can go out to consultants and contract some of this? I know that that question was brought up by Councilmember White last time, and so that's what we did, we asked a couple of our, um, consultants, what are some opportunities? That if we, um, could fulfill this position, what would that cost? I got a couple of rough numbers, that's what I wrote down here real quick, um, if we wanted to bring in an entry level inspector. It would be about ten thousand eight hundred dollars a month. If we wanted to bring in someone that was, uh, a mid-level construction manager, we'd be about fifteen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars a month. And if we wanted to hire someone that was a seasoned, uh, project manager or an engineer, we'd be seventeen thousand and forty dollars a month. So comparatively was, we were looking at the position and the total compensation packages, we were somewhere between probably a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. A year, and some of these other ones, numbers that we're looking range from two hundred and eighty thousand to four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year. So we noticed a significant savings for the position, and we otherwise feel like that position would be necessary all year. Um, to help us with construction, cause even though we may not be performing construction seemingly through December, January, February. And starting into March, that's when we're doing all of our, uh, contracts, that's when we're working on all of the procurement and everything else that would be associated with it. And having that person onboarded through some of those would be paramount.
And I, I would say too, ten years ago, there was a stop in construction, there is no stop anymore. There, there's projects going through the winter, and, and it's, whether it's water, sewer, building, it's, it's happening. And, and we're having to, to be able to, just for the amount of contractors that are available, like, if we can get them, we've gotta take them when we can get them and go.
And, and we're fully confident with a lot of these projects that are coming into the city and other items that are coming, that we can start managing those. And by having this position, it would give us the bandwidth necessary to ensure that we have, uh, more ability to accomplish some of these items. So that was the, the desire in the request for the construction manager position.
What about the permit processor, um, Taylor?
Yep, so the, the permit processor, uh, we currently have a hundred and seven active contractors in the city going through permits. And that obviously kind of changes from day to day, but we have thirty-two active fiber directional boring contractors and permits. So those thirty-two don't indicate that that's thirty-two in one area, that's thirty-two over many different areas within the city. So managing those permits, managing that work, taking the phone calls of broken sprinklers and other complaints from the contractor. Has become a significant burden that we're trying to make sure we can give the appropriate level of public service. And handle the uptick that we're seeing in a lot of, uh, requests for new fiber and other pushes into different communities. And so in order to meet that need, that they're pushing with the new fiber and the new adjustments, we needed that position to help us offset some of those items that would be coming in. And so that's what we're seeing, is we've seen a significant increase in permits and plan reviews, uh, specifically related to directional boring and fiber infrastructure. And this would be to help us address that influx of permits.
And this also goes in line too with the requests from Water Department to have an additional blue staker. It's just the amount of requests coming in, we are not able to adequately get to all the requests in a timely manner. And so that puts the city at great risk, so if we don't blue-stake something properly, and somebody hits a water line, it's on us to, to pay for the repair.
And, and I can say, uh, the, the directional boring companies have been highly successful in hitting our water services. So we appreciate Brady and his guys being quick to respond, but unfortunately, that's, that's been their highest degree of excellence. Is ensuring they're gonna catch one if we market.
I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, Brady, I mean.
I, I have one.
We, we, we also see that as a significant cost saving, so.
So, so Brady did provide some information that he said on a, on a typical busy workday, utility locator should be able to mark about twenty-five blue state tickets. In October alone this year, the city received a hundred and thirty-one in one day. Um, so it is significant, the amount of blue state requests, and they have to do it within, is it two day, two days, how many days do they have to blue state?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours. Yeah, and, and one of the things too, is a lot of these request tickets are not just, uh, a hundred feet, we're talking two blocks. Due to how boring contractors do their work, they, they go longer widths, and so fifteen hundred feet compared to maybe just a hundred feet. Is, is a lot different in just one blue state ticket.
Yeah, and so, yeah, back to, um, Heather's example that she had given, so a hundred and thirty-one tickets had come in. Over a thirty-two hour period, um, we have, we currently have three blue stakers as it stands. And essentially five utilities that have to be marked, meaning water, sewer, storm, and then as of twenty-fourteen. We picked up power for the city, um, historically, that wasn't something that was getting marked, which is a huge liability to the city. And then in twenty-eighteen, fiber was picked up, so the city does have some of its own fi- fiber to interconnect some of the facilities. So that's another key thing that we're trying to cover, um, not great documentation on either one of those last, both the last two utilities. But, um, that in mind, yeah, these boring contractors are very successful in hitting a lot of our utilities. Which is unfortunate, because it is very costly, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars can be.
And I was gonna say, and sometimes too, it's about protecting our citizens, because if they're going through and boring, like sewer laterals are the citizen's responsibility. And so sometimes if we're not properly documenting who's doing what, where, and then a year from now, or two years from now, somebody's like. There's a problem with my sewer line, well, and there's a bore going through it, then if we don't have the right documentation, it's hard for us to go back and help protect the citizen. From what's been done, so we, we wanna be on top of that right from the beginning.
I'm just gonna ask a quick question, how does this correlate to the fees that we pay, or that people pay to get these accomplished?
Meaning like pulling a permit, or?
People pay for you to go do this marking, or you, we just do it?
So, yeah, this would be, so being that we have three in-house blue stakers, they are all on staff to where we're, we're paying them on an annual basis to do that. So that in comparison is, if we went out to the, like a third party to blue stake, we went to a, a company, and it was. I think for just one blue staking, one blue sticker to do it, they had quoted us for four hundred and thirty thousand dollars on an annual basis. That they would have to, we'd have to pay, which this new position, I think is about just over ninety thousand dollars, is essentially what we would be.
I guess, I'm, I don't know how to ask this correctly, do people pay a fee to ask us to go and do it, is it part of the permitting?
No, they'll, they'll put in a blue stakes request, and then essentially we have to respond by law within forty-five, forty-eight hours.
From the state of Utah.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I, I have a question about, s- so, let's say we've done our job, uh, does it change how these more guys? Do their work, I mean, I mean, they're probably still gonna hit stuff, aren't they, and?
Well, and that, that, sometimes that, that happens, we're trying to reduce that, right, by having the, the permits processor, having inspectors out in the field. Having things located properly to begin with, that's how we, we reduce that risk, and that's what we're trying to do, is reduce the risk. It's not gonna solve every problem, somebody, just like, we can't solve problems with people making bad decisions driving a car.
Right.
Right, sometimes there are bad decisions made, but if we're, if we're doing our job properly, we can reduce that, and that's what we're trying to do.
But, but by having this new permit processor position, by having our inspectors and some of these others, we can actually increase compliance. On some of these, because we feel like we have, uh, additional kind of safeguards in place. And that's what we're trying to ensure, is that we can put some of these things in place prior to, or if we have a contractor that we know we have issues with. And we can start limiting them and taking the necessary steps to prevent them from trying to do damage, so is it a hundred percent accurate? No, but is it an improvement, yes?
I, I guess my, my, I got a question that's somewhat related, uh, I, me and several of my neighbors. We're gonna put sprinkler systems in, since we're digging, we're required to ask for the blue stake. So blue stakes, they, they call out the forces, nobody comes, you know, Ogden City comes, Power comes, Comcast comes, everybody comes. And to, to get me off the hook, you know, so that I know where things are, which I already know, I, 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 I really feel bad. Having to make the call, since I already know where everything is, I don't know.
That, that's to protect yourself and to protect the utilities, if you're digging with a shovel, it's, it's one completely different thing, right? You can go out and dig, hand dig with a shovel, but if you're using equipment to dig, that's, yes, you need to have blue stakes called. As a protection for you and.
There's no real way to solve the requirement, it's something that we have to do.
Yeah, I, I get, that's, that's where I find myself.
You'll make your neighbor pretty mad if you put them out of water.
Or, or cut their cable, yeah, that's, that's, I get that, yeah, yeah.
They can be without water and power, just not Comcast or cable.
And I was just gonna add, um, as far as these, these couple positions, we're talking about budgetary, the budgetary impact, so the blue staker would be in the water fund. And so through the utility, or through the, the fees charged through the water fund, it would help to cover the cost of that position. The permit process, the permit processor position, engineering actually had some part-time funding for a part-time position. That they would like, that they're applying towards helping fund this as a full-time position.
Yeah, that would be, that would be budget neutral to the, the budget for the GIS analyst permit processor, so. I would like to get Ed up here though next to, to talk about the aquatic supervisor, there's been some questions, um, about when, when do we need to bring on the aquatic supervisor? And so what we wanna make sure is that when Marshall White Center is ready to open, that the whole reason. That started to have a new center looked at was to make sure that the pool area was open, cause that's, remember, when, that's what went down first. And so we wanna make sure that when we open the facility, that the pool is ready to go, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Ed.
So I put together a, a timeline of the aquatic supervisor, and what they'll be doing throughout the months when, when they're hired on, um, the, the, with the approval coming in, in August. And, and let me just start off with this aquatic supervisor, to me, is probably the most important position down at the Marshall White Center. Because of the safety factor that is related with, with that, and so it's, it's, it's probably the most important one, um, for, for down there. And so if you see in October, we have it start in October, and that's cause Labor Day, um, throughout that month, September, hopefully we get them hired. And then we're closing down Lauren Far Pool, um, but then in October, we're drafting operational policies and procedures, creating an emergency plan. We're posting the positions, uh, for, for Marshall White with the lifeguards and the different positions that we'll have down there related to it with the head lifeguards. Now, um, with that, at the pool, we try to have around thirty employees, thirty part-time employees, that will be, and we anticipate that we'll need the same amount of employees. At Marshall White Center, and so there'll be a significant amount of hiring that will take place, understanding that we'll try to retain as much as we can. But it's also going to be, I mean, right now, we're, we're mostly high school kids that, that are, that are working for us, and that's not necessarily what we'll, we'll be with, with the Marshall White Center. Because of the hours of, of, that we'll have to pull open there, um, and so you see that as, as we go along the timeline, um, we'll, we'll be scheduled. And so you see that as, as we go along the timeline, um, we'll, we'll be scheduling the lifeguard classes and then we'll also be conducting, um, the lifeguard classes and, and the water safety instructor classes to be able to teach swim lessons through the months of December, all the way through March, to be able to get us staffed up and, and trained and ready to go. With, with that, we'll also have, have, um, be planning our specialty events and we'll also, um, be, any lifeguards that we do hire, we also have to retrain. We're required by the state to have four hours of training every month for them that, that they're also hired. And so it'll be a lot of training as we open up the center. Before the center opens up to the public, we need to get our tracts staying, uh, trained onsite and, and, and we usually do those trainings with the fire department so that if something were, were to ever happen, that that's not the first time that we've had that training or, or had that incident of, of a pass off to the fire department and so that we're ready to roll. And so a lot of this will be training and getting us up to speed. We anticipate early April, late March of, of an opening for it. So is there any questions?
Yeah, just, um, so we've never had a supervisor?
No.
Level at that?
No.
At either?
It's always been, it's always been a shared role where they also do programming and so.
So this person would be in charge of programming as well?
Uh, for, for the pool, not.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
And that includes Lauren Farr.
Yeah, who's Lauren Farr.
So we've never had one at Lauren Farr either, huh?
Nope, mm-mm, nope.
Interesting, okay.
Well, uh, and then I know there's also been a lot of questions concerning, um, parks and, and the four positions that's been requested for parks. And so I have Monty here to kind of talk about, um, what, what they will be doing. There's, I know there's a thought of kind of on-season, off-season and, and Monty's here to talk about what that, what we would consider off-season is really they're always on-season. And the, the other thing too, that I, it blew me away when Monty gave me these numbers was the amount of overtime his crews are working each year. This absolutely just was mind-boggling to me, the amount of overtime his crews are accruing.
So yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to be quick here, but, um, yeah, winter time, I, I, you, you know, many of you probably know Christmas Village. I don't know if you know that we start in October and, uh, it's all hands on deck, you know, until that's open. But then each night, seven days a week, we still have employees that have to be there until, you know, ten, eleven at night. Um, and so, uh, so, some of this would, would ease the burden. We rely on trying to keep some seasonals around to help out with the security and running the train and things, but, but we have to be very strategic because we can only work fifteen, they, they can only work fifteen hundred and sixty hours in a year. And so we're playing games just trying to have, have people. Snow removal, I don't know if you guys know, snow removal is a big one for us. You, you probably think of the street department, which they're out in the big trucks, but, uh, whenever it snows, we're out, we go to, you know, seventy-plus locations. Some of them are hand shoveling and, uh, snow blowing and, uh, using tractors, the trails, the parking lots, the municipal building parking lot here is, is one that we do as well as, um, golden hours, trailheads and things, so. And then, uh, also, we kind of try to bolster our forestry guys. They, you, you know, just in the winter, they're still, after Christmas Village is coming down in January, February, they're still out, they do a lot of tree removals, I think a hundred and sixty-nine this, this just in January, February and March, most of those were, so.
Yeah, I got it right here.
Yeah, you got it?
Yeah.
Um, and we'll kind of blow through these real quick, but, um, we've got pictures here that, some of the damage that happens in the summer gets you, uh, Councilman Hyer said lipstick on a pig. We're doing lipstick on a pig all summer long and then we got to come back to it. And so these are, uh, where we'll, where we'll put people. You know, replacing doors, this door was just broken into and a big hole put in. Weber State Wildcat program stores their stuff in there and we just had to make it, had to make it usable, but it's not a, a door that's easily replaced. And so those are the, the things that we do throughout the winter. New playground was in, didn't even have the, the surfacing in yet and broke and that'll take us, you know, six months to get the part here. It took us nine months to get the, the playground the first time, but, um, this is some of the stuff that we're doing in the winter. This is a partition that we just put in, one of the restrooms, trying to get away from, uh, you know, spending eighteen hundred dollars on one partition that, uh, that gets torn down. And so our guys in-house have been building these. This is a, down at High Adventure Park, um, and just trying to look at new ways and build things that, you can do pull-ups on this if you're into CrossFit, so these are tough. A couple of other things, there's a hundred and twelve locations that we manage, including traditional parks, trailheads, facilities, detention ponds, different rights of way and islands. Along with special event support, we're in, involved in more than sixty of those events in the year. And so there's always things that get put off because, and I'll, and I'll show you another picture here in a minute, but, um, this is just a, a spreadsheet that we keep of those hundred and twelve locations and what, uh, you know, how many pavilions we have there, you know, what kind of playground and irrigation. And so all of these things, um, need maintenance and we are falling behind. This was just this past weekend, I don't know if you can tell, but there's five, this is on the freeway and there's five, uh, five sets of bleachers on Sunday afternoon.
Coming back from their show.
So, uh, you know, this takes up, uh, takes up a good chunk of Thursday for the crew and then again on, on Sunday, you know, when you, when you start to look at the hours, you're looking, you, you know, you, you get into, okay, there was twenty, twenty percent of their work week, you know, a lot of graffiti. I, I did bring some other stuff, I didn't, if you're eating, you might not want to look at some of these.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through some of these next pictures, but different pictures that he's handing out.
These were, uh, but, but the, the, that one I thought was a perfect example. Well, so here, here's a good one. You see that we've cleaned it on the bottom, that was the third time, just to get it to that point, you know? And so this, this one, one thing ended up taking like four, four days. If I go there now to High Adventure Park, I can still see it, you know? A broken window there, that's something that we got to do in the, in the winter time, so. Yeah, th- these positions would help complete bag backlog projects, restroom rehab is a big one, ramp projects, playground repair, graffiti and homeless related cleanups. Easing excessive overtime. Uh, more than one-third of my, uh, full-time workforce had between two hundred and four hundred and eighty-five hours of overtime, so. That's not sustainable. So this was a new restroom, we blocked out some of the, uh, nice words on the door and up above, but, um, this is something that, you can already see the floor, how that was, that was covered in racial, you know, just weeks before racial epithets. And so it got painted over lipstick on a pig and, you know, that quickly wore off. So, uh, the next one, um, is one that was probably worse than that one that you just saw. And I have a picture in here that I didn't want to include to the, to the public, but that took, that took our employees to get it to that point. You can still see the toilet is, uh, we had to order a, a new toilet seat for that particular toilet. It's covered in paint, um, but everything else that took, you know, days for one, one restroom, so. So these, these are the type of things that we, you, you know, we need to get to in the winter. You know, we put heaters in them in the winter and then start repainting and trying to, trying to clean things up because they take a beating.
So as, as far as the employees not having, you know, things to do from November to, to February, it just doesn't happen. I mean, like Monty said, they, their breath is a week in January, just right after Christmas Village and then it's on to the next thing. So they, they don't get it, they don't really get a pause for anything. And that just is depending on whether or not it snows that week or not, so.
Oh, and, and snow, snow is really, it snows, it's not just that day. You don't just go out and clear it, it's like a three-day, you know, you hit the priorities and then you're back and then you're spreading ice, ice melt and so, but yeah. Any questions?
So there's other positions, do you want to come back in after this and talk about them or you? You okay? Okay? Any other? Thanks for doing that and preparing us and being able to have us have some conversation. Before we go in, is there anyone that wants to talk about the compensation? That, the reason we kept the, the closed session on was because of the compensation salary schedules? Anybody have any questions regarding that, that we have announced? It seems like we've, we've, we've been pretty open in the, in the public, so. All right, yeah, no, all right. Thanks for being here, you guys, and doing that and preparing all of that stuff.